Clerk Seigris would please call roll.
Right, trustee Anthony.
Who'd you say? Are you here, John?
Let me think.
Present, trustee Foster.
Hello.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
And let the record reflect that clerk Seigris is in attendance, treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
And trustee Snederman.
I am here tonight.
And supervisor Williams.
Good evening.
I'd like to call for a motion to modify the agenda to include item C1.
Mister Supervisor, I move that the board approve the agenda modify with the modification of adding agenda item C1 to set public hearing date for King Fuss Science and Technology USA Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate.
So, second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. The agenda is amended. And could we move C1 to the, take care of that up front, get that out of the way, and then we'll move on to our study session item.
Mister Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent agenda as written with item C1, the set public hearing date for King Fuss Science and Technology USA Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate for June 13th.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. We've got one item to cover this evening. It's Canton owned properties, and it will be led by Director Foss and his team. And I see we also have supporting cast members from Public Safety, Leisure Services, Planning, and Engineering. So, that being said, Tim, take us away.
Going old school.
Going old school, okay.
So, we provided, provided a couple of things for tonight's study session. We gave each of you a hard copy of a map that depicts the township owned properties.
Little awkward to look at right now, but okay, we've got that.
Gave you each a map of the township owned properties. This is still a little bit of a work in progress through Greg's keen eyes this weekend. He picked up a couple parcels that we've got depicted on the map as showing as a park. We're going to convert those to probably a different kind of layer. Those are a few properties up near Morton Taylor and Warren Avenue. They're really just wooded wetland areas that we acquired through developments that were constructed, you know, 25, 30 years ago. So, we're probably going to create a separate layer for, for those properties going forward. But, this serves as a basis for, for the discussion tonight and going forward throughout the rest of the year, I think. Generally, there's a number of reasons that, that the township acquires property, a number of public purposes. Those range from things such as road widenings or road improvements. There's reasons that we would want to acquire property now, especially property that's relatively inexpensive under tax foreclosure from the county. If we know that there's going to be a particular road that's going to be, require improvement in the future, and that particular parcel needs to donate right of way. So, less costly for kind of, let's just say, all forms of government, whether that's township, county, or state, when doing those kind of road improvements. So, we look to those types of properties and purposes each time a list is provided to us from the county. The other things that we look for are where we need to do utility extension projects, whether those are water sewer projects. Generally, that's our responsibility. But, we're also looking down the road for potentially electric utility projects, and I'll show you an example of one of those when we start talking about the map. The other public purposes that are out there are stormwater or wetland type projects, whether those are mitigations or regional stormwater projects that, that might be needed to support township facilities. And solid waste facilities is another category that kind of fits the public purpose of why we would acquire properties. You have seen over the years certainly a number of areas where sidewalks or pathways have been constructed, so sometimes there's a need to purchase property or acquire property for those purposes. Buildings, parks, recreation, and even economic development is another potential public purpose for which we can, we can acquire property. So, well, that's what I call the big list, those are the main topics. The reality is, is that the state law provides a lot of flexibility to communities to purchase property. And we provided a copy of both the Charter Township Act, the section of the Charter Township Act, which gives us the authority to purchase property. And then, in the packet, there was a copy of the first right of refusal law whereby, when taxes are unpaid to the county anywhere in the state for a period of three years, then a property goes into forfeiture. And, once it's into forfeiture, then a list is provided to the communities typically a little bit before July, there's a preliminary list provided. As you know, that list often gets circulated locally in the Detroit, Detroit Free Press. A specific edition is created for, for that list of properties each year. When we receive the final list, it's typically after the July cutoff date, so it's parsed down significantly. I think maybe in the last 15 years, there's been at most 40 or 50 properties on that list. So, while there may be hundreds on the initial list, by the time we get it, and it's been through the scrutiny of the county and final forfeiture proceedings, it gets pared down quite a bit. It's been as short as a couple of properties also in other years. So, not a lot, but we, we look at the list regardless every year. Then, we have a short period of time whereby the township board has to take action on that and give a formal resolution and payment to Wayne County for any, any forfeited properties. So, that's really where MSD comes into playing a role, a key role in determining properties that we think the township should purchase, or at least consider purchasing. So, we generally coordinate those purchases when it comes to sales of township owned property. It's typically handled through the supervisor's office. If an individual comes to us and wants to purchase any property that's owned by the township, we generally direct them to make the offer to the township supervisor's office, and then that is brought before the board in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Regardless, whether it's a purchase or a sale, it requires board approval. So, you will see those as we go forward over the, over the next several years. So, that's just a little bit of background about township owned properties and kind of what MSD's role is. Both Leisure Services are here tonight. Greg specifically about some of the public purposes on the Parks and Recreation side going forwards, should there be any discussion or any kind of questions in, in that regards. And then, Director Myers here also from Public Safety, as they have a specific interest in a property or some property in a part of the township as well. And then, Jeff Goulet, our planner, and Bill Surcheck, our Engineering Services Manager are here too. They obviously work with us when it comes to any technical recommendations regarding uses of property each, each year as we go through those. So, the map is, again, I'll go old, old school with this for now. But, basically, the map depicts whether hatch properties are shown with diagonal lines as being either a park or a camping park. And you can see this more clearly in your hard copies. The dotted areas are golf courses, we've got cemeteries denoted on the map. And then, generally, all these kind of light purple properties are the township properties. There's over 1,300 acres in total of township owned property in the township. That's about 5% by acreage of the total acres in the township. But, you know, the reality is when you take this facility, kind of the administrative complex around the township hall and library, the summit, the two golf courses, and Patriot, Independence Park, sum up those five facilities, and they make up probably, you know, ballparking at 85 or 90% of, of this property. The rest of the properties that the township owns are really just kind of scattered throughout the community. There's really kind of four types of prop, four ways you might say that we've acquired property historically. A couple stem from consent judgments, which are basically suits that have been settled between a property owner, or property owners, and the township over the years. A couple of note are here at the northwest corner of the community at Ridge and Ford Road. There was a consent judgment years ago between the Charter School, Sing Developments, and the township. Sing was a friendly partner to that consent judgment in offering an exchange of property that they had where the Charter School could be constructed, and they gave us property west of Ridge Road so that the township could, at some point in the future, develop that as a park. And that's where Patriot Park is planned to be developed, and as you know, through the discussions with Leisure Services, that there's already been some activity in beginning those, those development plans. So, that's one example of a consent judgment. Another small example of a consent judgment is right here on Proctor Road, west of Independence Park. There's a little tiny purple piece on the north side of the road. It's about two and a half acres of property that's left over from the Grand Sacola Consent Judgment from a few years ago. And, that's property that the township no longer needs, and the developer no longer needs. So, what you're probably going to see in the coming months is an offer from a local builder to try to acquire those properties from the township. Should the, should the board want to move in that direction, it would afford that developer to construct probably two to three lots at the most on that parcel. So, that's just a couple of examples of consent judgments where we've acquired property. Couple other, or one other type of property that we've acquired are through these forfeitures for unpaid taxes. There's a large parcel here on the southwest side of the township, south of the hamlet, if you can identify where that is. It's about 43 acres of property that in 2009, we acquired from the county under tax forfeiture. And at that time, the developer of the hamlet and all the surrounding properties around the hamlet failed to pay the taxes over a period of time, three years, and lost the property to foreclosure, to forfeiture. We saw it, together with a few other properties, on the county list, and it was already had a wetland and a detention pond, stormwater detention pond constructed on it that was serving the hamlet. It would not have been a good piece of property to end up in the hands of a private entity, because that private entity could have potentially held the homeowners association and any future developers around the hamlet for the future phases hostage by, you know, requiring an unreasonable amount of money to purchase that property from them. So, the board concurred with our recommendation, which was to purchase that property. We notified the developer who was going through foreclosure at the time, together with the bank, which was Comerica, and we worked out an arrangement whereby, basically, the bank bought it back from us for the amount that we paid. And, we're kind of in the last phases of taking the steps to now transfer that property or deed it back to the homeowners association, who have control over the stormwater maintenance agreement for the hamlet regional detention pond. So, that's really kind of the last step in, in that process that we need to take care of, and that'll happen sometime this year. So, that's, again, one other example of property that we have purchased in the past. We got compensated for the full amount that we paid, so we were not out of pocket. There are some state properties along Morton Taylor and Cherry Hill Road. My bearings here, right in here. Would be just, if you can think, just west of the ITC power corridor where the big Cherry Hill Station is, north of Cherry Hill Road. There are a number of properties there that were, that had been acquired by the State of Michigan Wetlands Land Bank. And when we did the sanitary sewer projects back in 2007, we needed to acquire six properties from the State of Michigan at that time in order to correct an alignment issue with the sanitary sewer. Those properties were $100 apiece, and, you know, we acquired those, we now own them, and the sewer occupies those, those couple of properties.
Which one was that again? I'm sorry, could you point to it?
Yeah, that's right at Cherry Hill and Morton Taylor, which is just immediately kind of west of this big ITC corridor, the big kind of open line.
Okay.
If you see the word Cherry Hill where it's printed, right on the road, it's those couple purple spots just to the west of that. And you'll see there's other properties to the north of that, that the township also owns, that the township acquired many years ago, either from tax forfeiture, or, you know, maybe from the state, I don't know, I don't honestly have records that far back to town.
There's no homes on those?
There are not.
Are those in the mix of one of the parcels that the guy wanted to acquire and we decided not to sell?
That's correct.
Not too long ago?
A few months ago, there was a request. So, in those particular properties, you know, the Morton Taylor right of way will, you know, not be extended north of Cherry Hill. There's significant wetlands and woodlands all through that area. So, there's, you know, very extremely unlikely that there'll ever be frontage properties on a kind of official Morton Taylor Road north of Cherry Hill. So, the only people that would benefit from those properties would be the property owners that live on Willard Road right now, which is the little residential road immediately west of Morton Taylor on the north side of Cherry Hill that back up to those properties. And then, another one we acquired back in 2010 is down here on Lots Road. It's in the immediate, the far southeast corner of the township. There's a rectangular parcel between I-275 and Lots, just north of the CSX railway tracks that we acquired in 2010. We had been working with Detroit Edison on some economic development options for that industrial area of the township. There's a lack of electrical power, if you will, reliable electrical power in that area, which has been one of the largest detriments, you might say, to industrial development in, in the area. So, a parcel came up here under tax foreclosure or forfeiture from the county that was relatively inexpensive. It was 12,000, according to my notes. It's, I think, eight or nine acres, it's a pretty good sized parcel, of industrial zone property. In discussions with DTE, they thought that would be a very good location for a potential substation to serve that area in the future. So, with the board's approval, we, we went forward with that. The Die Brothers subdivision, I want to come back to last. That's this large block of property, south of Michigan Avenue, and coincidentally, west of Morton Taylor, kind of a theme there with some of the properties and Morton Taylor Road. But, I want to kind of come back to that at the end, because we have a few kind of land use issues, which is in part why Jeff and Bill are here. And then, talk about some purposeful acquisitions. Back in 2006, we purchased a couple of properties here on Lots Road at Lotsford. Kind of hard to see on the map, but if you go north of Cherry Hill or south of Ford Road, about three quarters of the way along Lots, there's a couple of small parcels on the west side of the road that we acquired back in, back in '06, because we knew eventually the county was going to widen and pave Lots Road. There's a substantial curve, was and still is, a substantial double curve in that section of roadway, and there was, even back then, we had identified with the county that some additional property was going to be required to kind of smooth out the curve. They literally couldn't fit that future design into the existing right of way, so some property was going to be required. And the township took the initiative to acquire that property and then deed whatever we needed to deed to the county for the road project. That's, that's what I call a form of an acquisition of property where we specifically target something and then, you know, try to get it. We failed in a few circumstances, but that was one where, where we were actually successful. The last one that I wanted to talk about are property exchanges, and probably the, the largest property exchange that the township's been involved with dates back to the early 90s where the landfill is located here, you know, basically just east of Morton Taylor and south of Michigan Avenue. Lilly Road flanks the landfill at either end, both from the south and from the north. But, in exchange for an expansion of the landfill, which was a vertical height expansion at the time, the township negotiated a land exchange with the landfill, if you will. In exchange for getting their additional height increase, we obtained roughly 16 acres of industrial zone property along Michigan Avenue at Lilly. And for those of you that might recall, that property did sell at one point in time under a land contract to Dick Scott. Dick Scott made good on about half of the payments towards the land contract before a big balloon payment was due, and then chose not to proceed with the balloon payment. So, in essence, defaulted on that contract, and the township got it back. So, we had received, I think it was on the order of about $750,000 to that date on the land contract, which was not refundable. And we got the property back, and technically, it's kind of back on the market. So, that's, you know, property that we acquired through, through an exchange or through some kind of an agreement with the landfill. So, that's really kind of in summary, just a few specific areas around the township. Maybe turn it over to Josh, I know that he has some, some thoughts and some ideas about a potential use for that property.
Tim, there's some properties, if they're west of Morton Taylor, north of Salts, and south of Ford, there's a couple little particle, is that part of a subdivision that?
Yeah.
We owned the property, are the houses on there?
Yeah, those are, those are properties that we acquired through tax forfeiture from the county, where the private property owner stopped paying taxes on them, because they're either wetlands, or the, the county drain that runs through that neighborhood runs through or immediately adjacent to these properties, and they're not developable. So, we've acquired them, a few of them, we, pardon, pardon me, we paid a minor amount for, but the last series of probably seven or eight properties, we got those for free from Wayne County, so they gave them to us at no cost.
They're not suitable for development?
They're not. So, with that, I guess I turn it over to Josh.
Good evening. Recently had some conversation with supervisor Williams in regards to some planning that the Public Safety Department is doing, particularly the Fire Department. And one of the areas that we're looking at is the need and location for a fourth fire station. This started in a conversation many years ago, early 2000s, when Station 3 was built, and as the township continued to grow, trying to determine what that need was and where that would be. So, as part of the accreditation process, we had to do some GIS studies to determine our response areas, response times, and then population densities. And what you can see on this map is, under the NFPA National Fire Protection 1710 standard, the requirement is a four-minute response time. Very difficult for us to meet in 36 square miles, but all the green area you see is where we accomplish that four-minute response time. The light blue is a six-minute, the orange is an eight-minute, the red is a 10-minute, and there are some areas that are beyond 10 minutes. So, we're beginning our next strategic planning cycle and work on accreditation. We started looking at this map and trying to determine where the need for another fire station may be. What we came up with is the south end of the township, particularly addressing some of the southeast end of the township. And when I took a ride down Michigan Avenue recently to look at properties and see what was available, it's becoming slim because of the growth. So, I sat down with Kristin Thomas, and we looked at some properties, and when we looked at the Michigan and Lilly property that's owned by the township, that actually offers a lot of flexibility in terms of putting a fire station there. It would give us a great deal of east and west response time, along with heading north along Lilly and catching up some of that 275 Michigan Avenue corridor. And as you can see, a lot of that blue, orange, and red area would, would likely become a six, four to six-minute response time. It also allows us a great deal of flexibility in backing up Station 1 in some of the areas that Station 1 covers along Palmer Road. So, that is just kind of what we're looking at, it's a futuristic thing, but as that property is available and it's owned by the township, you know, it's something we would like to look at and possibly consider locking up a parcel or a section of that for future development as a fire station. If we do a similar station to Station 3, we need about two to two and a half acres to do that.
How big is one of those lots, sir?
I think it's 16 acres, is that correct?
The total, 16.
Is that where there's a gap, someone owns that little bit in there?
No, that's actually just the two that are contiguous. Yeah. About, about eight acres each, yeah.
How far away is the Wayne or Westland Fire Station from there, and do you usually work with them in that area?
The closest fire station in the city of Wayne would be on Wayne Road, north of Michigan Avenue. That's a considerable response time even into, even to our border at Michigan and Hanen. And quite honestly, they, they don't have the manpower to assist us even.
Do we ever assist them in that, you know, past that area?
We only do through our mutual, current mutual aid agreements. If they're, currently, they're operating with about four to five firefighters on duty per day, cover the entire city of Wayne. So, if they end up with a structured fire, they end up, they can utilize us through the existing mutual aid agreements that we have in place.
Josh, all right. You're just saying we should designate one of those, or, because we already own them, we don't have to go out and get them, is that right?
Air market.
Air market.
Lock it up for future, five years from now, four years from now.
Don't sell it.
Yeah, preserve it for something.
And in your mind, since we're not moving forward this, would the Warren Road older fire station come before redoing that one come?
Yeah, that's correct. Warren Road, because of the condition of that building, it's, it's more of an immediate need. So, we're looking to address that immediately. We've been putting money away for at least the last four years to accomplish that goal. What I would propose is that we, tonight, we just keep an open mind and consider it. I'm working with our GIS to do additional GIS studies to see, so the map that you see today, if we, if we were to put a fictitious fire station in that location, what does that do in, in terms of our response? And, and then we can move that around and see what that looks like. And so, it's just a kind of a very preliminary thing. But, I know that, you know, as properties become more valuable and more desirable in Canton Township, it's going to be more difficult for us to find property, to build infrastructure like a fire station. So, it's just kind of future planning, future thinking.
So, now that we got our technology back, one thing that I might have failed to mention earlier is, when we do acquire property from the county under forfeiture, when we resell that property in the future, we have two options. We either sell it for what we purchased it for, less than what, well, really, three, I guess technically, less than what we purchased it for. guess technically, less than what we purchased it for, which kind of doesn't make a lot of business sense. Or third, if we sell it for more than what we purchased, purchased it for, anything over and above the amount that we paid, including any expenses that we had while we owned the property, like doing environmental cleanups, tearing down buildings, anything along those lines, would then have to be remitted to Wayne County. And that was part of that law that Kristen had sent out, I think a number of months ago to the, to the new board. So just so you're aware of that, that fact.
I'm sorry. I ask for clarification. So we could, we would, if we sold the property for more than it was worth, we could recoup some of our costs, if we had to do environmental studies or improvements, out of the profits that Wayne County, that we would be giving to Wayne County, correct?
That's correct, within whatever the state law allows.
Okay.
Correct. Usually it's typically, you know, environmental work, environmental cleanup, or demolition of structures that are on a, on a blighted or abandoned property.
The exchange that you said that we, that Dick Scott started to buy, how do we receive that? What exchange did we get that through?
We got that from the landfill in exchange for an increase in the volume or the capacity of the landfill. So the, the height and volume of the landfill was fixed.
That was the one.
Based on the original 1989 agreement. And then through the amendment that the board approved, thinking it was in the 1990s, later 90s, the exchange was that, or in exchange for granting the, the increase in volume, we got those two additional properties.
Thanks. Where we have cemeteries, I mean, we only really own one cemetery, right? On Sheldon?
We have three, actually. We have one right here that's on the screen, which we're trying to work on the ownership question, but there's a small cemetery right in here called Downers, right at I-275, right at the I-275 on-ramp.
It's up the hill?
Up on the hill, right, right by the manufactured community park here. So that's one of the cemeteries that we own. And then we have a cemetery right here on Sheldon Road, just north of Michigan Avenue.
See that one? So the, oh, so the one, but the one on Hagerty, that one's not colored then, right? Is it?
It's not.
Oh, okay.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Just didn't know if I was missing something.
Yeah, that was one of the, you know, one of the edits that we're still trying to sort out is the ownership. It's not showing up in our database as township-owned. The township has maintained it forever. And the staff, the staff believe it is in fact township-owned or part of the M-dot, the original M-dot right-of-way for Michigan Avenue. So we're just trying to clarify that currently before we finalize the database. And then the last one we have is, if you want me to zoom out, whoops, is up in the northwest corner of the community. I guess I should look at my screen. I'm not so dexterous enough to be able to navigate like a doctor. So the last cemetery we have is right up here at Jide Road and
Ridge.
And Ridge Road, yeah, which also currently is not, not coded, but that's a township-owned cemetery.
So for the one on Sheldon Road, I noticed there's land behind it. Does that mean that cemetery can be expanded or that's just land, just greenery?
It can't. It's flood, it's flood plain back there and, whoops, sorry, I went too far. It's flood plain and river in essence in behind that property.
Okay. Thanks.
Back in here?
Yes, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Tim, are there plots available in those cemeteries? Are they filled up or?
Well, it's an interesting question. We hired a consultant late last year to survey both the cemetery at Jide and Ridge Road and the Sheldon Cemetery. And also using our GIS, lay down the plots that have been sold historically since the 1800s to determine whether or not there is any property available. Sheldon Road Cemetery, I suspect not. It's possible that there is property available at the Jide Road Cemetery. And if that's the determination, the consultant, what we'll come back with is a recommendation on a policy and procedure for sale of any of those prop, you know, any of those plots. There's, over the years, been a number of questions asked, whether or not there's property still available. And if you can appreciate, 100 years ago, you know, some of the record keeping was on the back of a piece of paper that two plots were sold to, you know, John Smith for a certain amount of money. And those are the records that we're currently trying to translate into an accurate digital map now. So the consultant is nearly done with phase one, which is to actually kind of lay out the grid and see, see what's there and what's not there. And it seems like they got pretty good correlation on Sheldon and not quite as perfect up at Jide, which is a little bit older site.
We used to get money from the state to maintain those, that we don't get that anymore?
Not to my knowledge.
I, I haven't seen that, no.
Yeah, the, we had researched some records a while ago and it's been, I think, more than 12 or 13 years since the cemetery fund was actually closed out. So now the cemetery fund just simply exists within the general fund of the township and the maintenance responsibilities are shared between municipal services and leisure services. Leisure services generally do the maintenance on the sites and we dig the graves and bury the, bury the vaults after the casket's been installed.
There is a report coming?
There is. I would anticipate probably late 2017, we should have the report from the consultant. And our thought was to have a study session with the board to explain the results and kind of go over what, what the findings were.
Besides those, are there any private cemeteries in Canton?
Yes. There's Knollwood and then there's also the Ridge Road Cemetery. Those are two on the, on the west side. I'm not sure if there's any other private sites, none that leap to my mind anyways. So, so that brings us back to the final parcel that we wanted to talk about tonight. Whoops, sorry. And that's the Die Brothers Development. Let me just zoom in. So the Die Brothers subdivision is an old subdivision platted through the county process, south of Michigan Avenue. This is Morton Taylor Road, so it's located west of Morton Taylor, south of Michigan. And if you look at this large rectangular parcel of property right here, this is our public works facility. So you've got DPW, if you will, to the south. We own a large chunk of property off of Sheldon Road, just north of DPW. And then everything that's showing up in color in what was the Die Brothers or what is the Die Brothers subdivision is owned by the township. We own the majority of everything south of Leopold, which is this street here. There are only, I think, five or six homes left in the Die Brothers subdivision. All the other homes that were in there were demolished many years ago. So there's still a few, few people hanging on back in there and living what I'd call the substantial rural life, a very different character for how that, that area feels. If you've driven in there, it's gravel roads, heavily wooded, there's some wetlands in that area. There's a creek that traverses our property and kind of borders on the south edge of the Die Brothers property that runs out to the McKinstry Drain, which is a fairly substantial drain that runs north and south along Morton Taylor Road, all the way into Van Buren Township to the south. So it's a little bit of a wetter, woodier type of area, but it was previously considered or developed as a residential neighborhood. And over the years, the township has been acquiring property in here with the public purpose that, A, should the landfill, which their property is this large white chunk here, should the landfill ever need to expand to the west, that we would have some property to either serve as a place to relocate the ITC transmission towers, which run in this long rectangular parcel north-south, or serve as additional mitigation or just buffer from, physical buffer from the landfill if it was ever required to expand west. The other public purposes that we've acquired property in here for was, should the landfill not be expanded, we know eventually it's going to fill up. Right now, that projection is on the order of about 17 years based on the current rate of fill. And actually, the supervisor and I were just at the landfill last Thursday, right? And they confirmed that 17 years is, is the number that they're working with based on the current rate of fill. Now that could accelerate or decelerate depending on what happens there, but that's probably a good ballpark to be working with. But when it does fill up, then would the township need a transfer station to take our waste somewhere further outside of the, you know, immediate Canton area? So some, you know, that was another reason that why we've been acquiring property in the Die Brothers is in the event that occurs. And then finally, should Public Works, which owns this large chunk of property here off of Sheldon Road, should Public Works ever need to be expanded to take on additional services such as roads, for example, you know, it would be nice to have property nearby. So those are a few of the reasons that we've kind of gone back and forth with over the years regarding public purpose for property in this area. We have since met numerous times over the last decade and a half with the landfill about expansion plans. Now that this landfill is also owned by the same company that owns the landfill in Sumter Township, which is significantly larger than this site, it's extremely unlikely that they will ever want to expand this site. Sumter is not that far away. In fact, you can see it from the top of the hill at the landfill. I think they said 16 miles or 17 miles to the south. So it's not an unreasonable haul distance, which probably means that we won't need the transfer station and we won't need additional property for expansion of the landfill. So those public purposes have maybe seen their course. And there is property in the Die Brothers subdivision that the township may wish to consider declaring surplus and actively marketing for potential sale. So that brings us really to the, the land use question.
What was that, one in the bottom there? Yeah.
This one right here? This is the Munn landfill.
Oh, okay.
So this is half of a landfill that was purchased under tax forfeiture from the county. The western half is located here. At the time, the property owners here had become divorced and one of the property owners, honestly, I don't remember husband or wife, but one of them chose not to pay the taxes on the site, so they lost it to forfeiture. We examined it from an environmental and an economic benefit and at the time, Sock Trail Hills was talking to us about development of the final corner of their site, which is the southwest corner. So they needed a place to put clay. And we had a substantial parcel of property back in here that wasn't being actively used. It was an old compost site from the 1990s. And we negotiated an agreement with the landfill to place their clay here from the excavations for the cells to place waste in the southwest corner of the landfill. And the, the way that they got the clay from over here to here was to build an access road across the Munn landfill. And as part of that agreement, which again was approved by the board, they are maintaining the access road until they're done using it. And that is, once they've completed the landfill construction, the filling here within the next 17 years, they'll bring the clay back and use it as cover on the landfill site as they build it out. So.
Is Munn no longer an active landfill?
No. Yeah, it has not been, they, they haven't filled for decades on that site. So what we do with it long-term, I don't know. I know we've had some questions from the public regarding that and we've answered those questions over the time. There's not a plan right now. 17 years in my head anyways is too far out to be planning. What we're going to do with this property, when we have a caretaker for it, we have all the approvals we need and we're receiving about $100,000 a year in revenue for using our excess property in behind Public Works to store their clay. So alternatively, they would have had to haul the clay off-site and then bring clay or other material in, which certainly would have been costly for them when that agreement was executed.
And then what's kind of east of that, kind of where it says Lilly?
East.
This way.
Gun range?
Yep. Yep, that's the public safety gun range off of Lilly Road.
What do we do?
We could, we could someday do a study session out there.
Can I ask a question that's peripherally related to? That in 17 years, when we look, because we currently don't pay for waste disposal, correct?
That's correct.
But when that does fill, we will be paying. What is the value of the service that we're getting right now for the, you know, for dumping for free? I mean, what would it, what's the, what's the, what's the cost there, the annual?
Yeah, we, we estimated that a few months back when we were talking about the automated recycling and it's, it translates to about $25 to $30 per customer per year or per household per year here in the township. So if you take that times 27 and a half thousand solid waste customers, that gives you the rough value of what, what that equates to per year.
There's two components why we're below market value when you look at everybody around us. That is a significant portion of that.
So that really leads us to the, the next point on the agenda, which was really kind of the tie to the future land use discussion, which is coming up on the 19th, that we're having jointly with the Township Board and, and Planning Commission. And when the comprehensive plan was updated in 2012, one of the focus areas that the Planning Commission and Board considered, it's really, you know, a Planning Commission function, but the Board approved it or adopted the plan. One of the focus areas that the Planning Commission and staff looked at was Michigan Avenue. And over the years, if you're familiar with Singh's Executive Park, a little bit further right in here off of Lilly and Michigan Avenue, Singh has kind of flip-flopped back and forth of whether they want their property to be developed as industrial property or commercial property. Right now, industrial has a little bit more value to them, so that's kind of the direction they're going with, with their project. But at the same time, the Planning Commission looked at this and evaluated, you know, what should we have along Michigan Avenue between Lilly and Sheldon Road in particular? And chose to eliminate residential uses from consideration in this area. So when the specific policies that were written in the comprehensive plan were finalized, it listed all the different types of mixed uses that were permitted. So we changed it from either commercial or industrial to mixed use, which allows either potential use in the corridor. But when those policies were written, it eliminated the ability to do any kind of residential here. So the question really for the Board is, you know, what's your feelings about considering, now that we're in a new update of the comprehensive plan, what's your feelings about considering residential again for this area? Certainly, we have property holdings on the south side. There are other developers that have talked to us over the last several years about the potential for developing commercial, industrial, and residential on the north side of Michigan Avenue, Avenue in this area. So the timing is probably good to at least think through what the Board feels. So the timing is probably good to at least think through what the Board feels while we get into the discussion, starting on the nineteenth.
Those neighborhoods, I mean, in that area are, I mean, they're, I think they're an acre each, right? Right along Lily, actually, got a lot of residential. So they're bigger properties. So are you talking about something like that?
Well, just residential in general is, it's currently, for example, there's a parcel, there's a parcel right here that is currently held by a developer who also owns the property along Michigan Avenue here. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but it's currently zoned R2. So it's conceivable that this, this could be developed as, as R2, which I believe is probably what Singh's project to the east was developed at.
One.
One? Okay. And then we've got probably R4 or 5 to the north. You can see the lots are much smaller immediately north off of Applewood, et cetera.
Property on Michigan Avenue, Franky, Michigan Avenue, at one time was a zone, multiple family. They got Zou's, a commercial. So at one time, it was a commercial, multiple families down the avenue.
On both sides? North and south? North side only?
North side, east and west.
Yeah, so this area right here is what Jeff's describing, was, was zoned residential at one time. And has since been, most recently with the future land use plan designated as mixed use. So again, you know, really the question is, you know, we have some substantial properties in here, most of which were acquired through county tax forfeiture. I know that.
CDPG funds, pretty much, to a special advantage, that whole south, pretty much CDPG.
Yeah, I think this block here is what Jeff's referring to, was acquired with CDPG funds. So there'll be, you know, some other rules and regulations that pertain to the sale of that property. But over the last few years, or last maybe decade and a half, any of the properties that we've acquired in here have probably been purchased on the order of about six hundred to maybe fifteen hundred dollars per property. That would be typically what the three-year delinquent taxes would be on those parcels.
Tim, are, so in this area here that you're looking at, did you say there's only a half dozen houses in the whole area?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Are you talking about the south side?
Yeah.
Like even though they're, they're white in the top part there, are their houses where it's white?
No.
Or are they knocked down as well?
In fact.
Demolished.
Yeah, if you think about this particular road right here, Willard, at the corner of Willard and Michigan is, is, or not Willard.
Corrine.
Corrine?
Wabash.
Corrine. Is, is L. George's Coney Island.
Okay. So this is behind business?
Correct. You've got commercial generally fronting Michigan Avenue all the way along here. And then everything from the alley back is kind of technically the old, what was residential at one time. There's, I think, the odd business in here. There's a excavating company that was in here that's, I think, now defunct. And a couple other parcels.
And it's zoned residential?
Light industrial.
Light industrial.
And per the last policies that were developed, when the kind of Planning Commission looked at this as a focus area, they restricted residential uses built north and south of Michigan Avenue.
Do you see any environmental issues being so close to the dump there? For someone to, to build there?
I don't. You know, proximity to the, the landfill is always an issue aesthetically and from, from an odor standpoint, periodically, once it's closed, typically it's, you know, pretty good. It's while they're actively filling it, that, that there tends to be odor problems. But there's a pretty large buffer here of wetlands that were mitigation for the landfill. And then the ITC corridor, that is this long, narrow strip here, before you actually get to the foot of the landfill on this property. You know, marketability of those properties is, you know, probably going to drive more of, of an apartment type of development, more of a, a slightly more dense residential type of use, rather than some of the single-family uses that you see further north of, of the Rouge River.
Because I know, I mean, north of Michigan, you can smell the landfill sometimes. And so it's that close, wouldn't, I mean, I'm looking at gases and all kinds of things, and are we buying ourselves a headache?
Yeah, I think the, you know, the biggest risk, post, the biggest risk is really before the site is completed, is completely developed. Once the site is filled and capped, you know, the gases are being controlled, they're being managed, they're being pumped to a facility, and then being refined and sold back to DTE in essence, through a, through a large project that they, that they have on the site.
But that's seventeen years, right?
Yeah, probably in the fifteen to seventeen-year range. So the thing is with, you know, land use, you're, you're thinking long-term. And, you know, what do you, what do you want it to look like, what do you want it to be in the future?
Can I ask a question? Because I'm not familiar with this, but in, once a landfill has reached its expected use, what happens to the prop, I mean, will Republic keep the property? I don't, or help, help me understand what that looks like? Because I mean, I've seen.
Right.
Other communities and what they've done with them. You've seen, you know, down, anything down river, there's, I mean, it's a golf course on top of one.
Mount Brighton.
Right.
Right, skiing.
It's driven, driven a fair bit by the agreement, the host community agreement that, that you have in place. In the case of Riverview, that host community agreement has a heavy city presence in the development of that site. It's operated, in essence, as a city park, post-development. In our case, what the agreement speaks to is, within a certain number of years of final closure, or filling up, the community and the landfill operator at the time, presumably that will still be Republic Services, would work on a post-closure plan. So at that time, we would determine what potential uses exist for the site and how the township might want to see the private entity development. It doesn't talk to actually conveyance of that property to the community. It would still remain a private property. Obviously, that could be negotiated at the time, if that was something that the community was interested in. But, you know, I think you'd want to take some both good engineering and good legal advice going into those post-closure activities. But that's still quite some time out. And if you know the footprint of the site, the footprint of the site is, it's, for the most part, kind of filled from toe of property line. There's a little bit of a setback all the way around the site, but the majority of the site is going to be filled, so the majority of it will be a hill. And there's, you know, maybe some recreational opportunities or grass, just green, open space opportunity for the community. I think those discussions probably aren't gonna start for another decade.
Looking at Google Maps at these areas, they're, some of them are very dense with Even the area with the homes there has grown in very densely. It doesn't look like they knocked down a lot of trees in that area. And I just, part of what we would do, I'd be concerned about how much we could save in terms of what looks pretty dense.
Yeah.
Subdivision, Steve, it used to be an active subdivision, there were a house on every lot. So back in the eighties, it was kind of pre-war house.
Mm-hmm.
But half of the houses, that, before deterioration, at a certain point. So the eighties, the area of, you know, south end of the, a lot of those were houses purchased with CDPG funds, were essentially white. So that's how that whole property started. So essentially, the trees they see on there have actually grown up since the eighties. Trees that were in the lots, were trees that have now grown up on vacant lots after the houses were removed.
Yeah, I can't even see the lots anymore.
Essentially, they were being claimed, you know, in accordance with those lots, from that perspective. And there are big courses, weapons that kind of run through, the south portion of the property gets weapons at, so we're having that a lot of time around too. But it was actually an active, full subdivision, for the most part, of the white, tree whole wood.
What's this thing that, where your cursor is that whole big white space right there? It looks like some kind of swampland or something like?
Yeah, this is, this is the wetlands, one of the wetlands mitigation sites for the landfill project.
Okay.
So it's, yeah, this is, this is very wet.
That will never be developed.
No. And then there's another, another chunk of that up here, just south of the, south of the subdivision and north of.
South of the Rouge?
The park. North of the park.
Oh, north of the park?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Where, where's the trail, or the, where, where's the trail running?
It's in the blue.
Trailhead is right in here.
Oh, it's not in the blue?
Trailhead is like right in this area.
Oh, the trailhead?
Yep. Yep, the trail is actually in the hatched area.
And then go.
Correct.
Now, the ITC trail doesn't, does not go, does it, does it go south of the, of the Lower Rouge Trail, or no?
It does not. We had discussions years ago with Van Buren about possibly extending it south, but, but Van Buren, like, hasn't talked to us in, you know, probably eight or ten years on that.
Okay. Was that a, did the ITC as a private corporate, I mean, how did the, I guess I'm not familiar with that process of how the ITC trail came into existence, or?
Yeah, we, we petitioned ITC to allow us to construct a sanitary sewer along the corridor, rather than coming down Morton Taylor, which was the other option, to come down Morton Taylor from north of Cherry Hill, through the wooded wetland area, and probably in greater or closer proximity to all the homes along that area, all the way to this location here. We looked at an alternative to come down the ITC corridor, which was, you know, pretty wide open. And kind of the, the pitch we made to ITC was twofold. One, we needed an access road for maintaining the sanitary sewer system, and it would be better put in their corridor where there's already existing electrical utilities, so they would benefit from it. And then, secondly, as a mitigation or offset to use of their property, we would construct a recreational trail. So that was kind of the, the agreement that we came to. So a lease was entered into, and we have a lease for, long-term lease for the property from ITC.
Do, do the two intersect?
The, the ITC and the Rouge intersect in essence right here. So the trail runs kind of east-west across here, and then along the west side of the ITC corridor, the trail kind of takes off going north here.
And then it's private to the west of where your cursor is, that area right in there?
This, this prop, this property is privately owned by the developer who also owns these properties in here. And they've been talking to us, just as a bit of additional history from what Jeff explained, we've had proposals from Myers to construct a second Myers store on this site. We've had proposals from Menards to construct a Menards lumber and home care center store on this, this site. Both those didn't happen. And then there was an additional kind of strip center, large strip center, if you will, similar to what was constructed at Beck Road and Michigan Avenue, proposed for this site. And this was all part of what was called Michigan Avenue Marketplace. Those same developers have been talking to us for probably three years now. And in fact, Eric, who's here tonight, knowing this topic was on the agenda, is, works for the engineering company that represents those developers. So that's part in reason why he's here to hear any discussion that, that ensues about, about this area.
I don't know if you're asking for opinions tonight or anything, but, and this is just off the top of my head, but, and I don't know if you're saying this, but I think along Michigan Avenue should be business, you know, not, I wouldn't want to see residential hitting Michigan Avenue. I don't know if that's a possibility of what is being discussed at all, but I think it should be a business corridor along the, the road and maybe behind it, you know, just like there's behind Ford Road, there's, there's homes that, so, because at first I was concerned where the businesses were, and you mentioned L. George's there on the south side, but the same for the north side. So if you're talking about a residential in that area, on the north side of the park and the south side, that the south side doesn't come all the way down to Michigan Avenue.
Yeah, some of the concepts that the developers shown us over the years has been some commercial, kind of, some commercial along Michigan Avenue here, some residential immediately behind it, residential on these parcels, and then additional residential up here on this heavily wooded parcel to the north.
And that would be access from Morton Taylor from the, from the north?
Well, those details are yet to be worked out. It has the potential to be accessed to this residential subdivision to the north. That would require county approval. But it could also be accessed along Michigan Avenue. The trick there, they would have to construct a new roadway bridge over the Rouge where the existing pedestrian bridge exists.
Where was the proposed fire station? Are we, I mean, weren't we looking in that area for the proposed fire station?
Right here. So it's all kind of in the same area.
Okay.
I mean, what's coming to my mind right now is the, the previous board did a joint study session, I believe, with the DDA, where we talked about the Ford Road, DDA corridor, and we talked about, kind of the way that Ford Road organically developed with regards to the parking, going all the way up to Ford Road almost, and then the commercial setback, and how that provided some challenges to making Ford Road pedestrian accessible and more walkable. And there was discussion, I thought, you know, and so when I think about, looking at, at Michigan Avenue was kind of a blank canvas, if, if it's, if it's our intention, I guess for, for me, when I see Michigan Avenue, I would not necessarily see that as the model to recreate. So if we're talking about doing mixed use, or if we're talking about that and zoning the, the commercial up front in a way to try, you know, and then if we are gonna do the, the residential behind there, or have, you know, maybe, maybe do the mixed use where it would be like, you know, like retail on the bottom, office on the top, lots on the third floor, to try to create like, I don't know, that's what, I'm just thinking, I'm not telling somebody how to develop their own property, but I'm thinking about.
I don't think we could ever narrow the road to make it that you could like easily, you know, bounce back and forth. Like, I'm thinking about, like in Dearborn, Ford Road, where it kind of narrows there, and they've started to build, like storefronts right on the street there. Because we need this to be a major throughway. It might take a pedestrian bridge or something like that to get you to be able to walk on both sides of that wide road, but, or you're just gonna shop one side, if, if that's the case.
Oh, right. No, but with regards to the fact that they said, so what you typically will see when people, and I can, I'm guilty of this, having grown up in this community for most of my life, is I will, I'll, I'll drive into Target, park, go into Target, get back to my vehicle, drive over to Lowe's. I won't walk from Target to Lowe's because, one, I would get, I could get hit by a vehicle, you know, because it's not designed for foot traffic. Once you're inside the commercial district, and that was brought up at the, at the joint DDA session, I remember, is they kind of talked about, if you're walking down the sidewalk and you want to go to Chuck E. Cheese's, you have to walk through a parking lot to get to Chuck E. Cheese's. There's no connector for pedestrian traffic.
Your example of big box stores, I don't know that you'll ever get someone to not drive from one big box store to another, but the smaller, like the shopping plazas where there's smaller stores, like where Chuck E. Cheese's, if those were on the streets, up front with parking in the back, say, or something like that, then perhaps you'd get more sidewalk use, like you're talking about, and maybe we could do that here.
Target cools on Michigan Avenue, people walk.
I think where we're coming from is if we decide, you know, the fifth use concept of one side or both sides of the street, is what they have to, like, what they have to do from a planning standpoint, how deep do we want to go with the commercials, and what we sort of want with residential in the south?
Right.
And then, and then coming out with goals and objectives for development of that commercial area, whether it's the Midrife District, whether it's the C-Tree Commercial.
Yeah.
Because the nature of Michigan Avenue is even more regional than Ford. Because the nature of Michigan Avenue is even more regional than Ford Road, it's even, you know, all types of traffic patterns, what type of commercial, the attractive areas, so those are the kind of things we would then investigate based on future land use in this area, and change it from what it is now, essentially, commercial on one side and just on the other, to more of a mixed commercial and residential.
And I would be in favor of that for a number of reasons, you know, and, you know, I can't, every time I pick up cranes, or even like the Wall Street Journal, I keep reading articles about the threat to like retail, and what, and, 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 and so when I see how much of our space is zoned commercial, I do get a little bit nervous about that. And I'm not saying like, you know, I'm not, the sky's not falling, but I am saying like, it seems to be, I'm seeing that reality. So when we talk about moving the zoning towards a more residential friendly zone, I mean, I, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to that.
I think another thing we need to think about in Michigan Avenue too, is, you know, we have a cluster of commercial which is fairly concentrated between essentially Bell, Bell, Canton Center Road and Michigan Avenue. That's where our commercial business is really concentrated, certainly in the community. It also serves a lot of regional traffic. One of the problems we've had with this particular site near Michigan Avenue, it's in between our major, major commercial area, 275, so it's a little bit too far away from 275, and it's not quite close enough to Canton Center to be able to integrate well with the existing commercial area. More than we necessarily want to strip out Michigan Avenue with commercial on both sides of the road, with big box stores either, so. Because, you know, so you have to make sure with, uh, Michigan Avenue itself, plus you have the, you know, location, location, location in terms of where commercial wants to be, right now, commercial doesn't want to be here. So you have to almost create an environment for the traffic commercial there.
Which is people.
In terms of your, your planning policies, your zoning guidelines, those kinds of things, create value to that commercial to be there. Commercial on rooftops behind it, because Morton Taylor doesn't go north there, it doesn't have good connectivity to the community, and you don't have any commercial rooftops in the south, commercial doesn't want to be there because there, it doesn't have any rooftops around necessarily. So it's really depending on bi-path traffic on Michigan Avenue, so it attracts more of that bi-path regional traffic. So that's the, the end and the end of Michigan Avenue in this area, because it's, it's, it's a tough area, it's in between places.
But you're also looking at the landfill in 17 years, and maybe that could become a park also, or walkable area too. So if that's the case.
It's never gonna be housed?
No, but if, if you do that, how do you connect that to what you're planning there?
Yeah, the commercial stuff on there is really driven by, you know, either bi-path traffic or, or houses that have a certain distance on that area. That's what drives your, your.
I'm just, I'm doing a lot of work right now to rework my precincts, and I'm thinking like, oh, if we had X amount of houses in there, I'm gonna, I got voters in places I didn't have voters before, and I'm.
Sort that out, sort it out.
It's a good problem to have, I think.
Yeah, it is.
Interesting.
But, I mean, we have a DDA for Ford Road, do we look at doing something like that for Michigan also, you know, just even a temporary, a group figuring out?
DDAs, the, the purpose of the DDA is to do a tax capture over and above for incremental that stays in the DDA to improve that zone, and that is how they paid for the lights and the walls and the landscaping, made it nice. Um, for Michigan Avenue, I don't know if we wanna lose any tax capture away from general fund.
I don't want to.
Yeah, I don't think we want to, we wanna go the other way, wanna go the other way.
What condition?
You have to show deteriorating property values and the lighting conditions.
In order to create the DDA.
To create the DDA, when the DDA was first created, it was deteriorating property values, or lower property values over and over across the community.
Right.
So part of the DDA is actually, you know, development increase, overall, has developed a curve that increases your tax base and increases property values in your middle, to the deteriorating conditions.
Combined with currently at the state level, there's pressure to eliminate all DDAs, just disband them.
Question, there, there's an authority or some, and I apologize, or some district over at Lots and Ford that we created that's not the DDA, am I correct, or is that just a zoning district, or how?
It's a zoning district, yeah, it's no real.
An overlay district, would it be possible to do something like an overlay district, or no?
To create a special zoning district in that area. Lots really considered that as successful.
Right, okay.
And the map actually recommends replacing it, either the DDA overlay district, you know, the second business district in Ford Road, and then getting rid of it, you know, south of the DDA areas.
Will we not, when we have our next joint meeting, will we not be discussing the DDA and the map changes potentially that are coming there as well, as part of the master plan?
Yeah, I think you bring in a general, it's not the master plan.
Okay.
The last quarter is still a matter of time.
I know, um, you know, a number of you expressed some concerns about traffic, and, you know, traffic, um, has been something that, um, Eric has, has looked at on behalf of, um, his, his clients' properties. Um, if developed as it currently is zoned right now, the traffic intensity would be probably higher, uh, based on the C-three zoning that exists at this location than if some residential was kind of blended in with it. So, um, you know, it could provide for, um, kind of, you know, less long-term traffic impacts for Michigan Av, if, uh, if residential was introduced in, in this area as an option. If the board's not aware, Michigan Avenue, when it was reconstructed in Canton Township, a number of years ago, um, was, was done so, um, and I'll just zoom out a little bit, whoops, uh, from, generally from I-275 to our, uh, western boundary was, uh, constructed so that it could serve, uh, three lanes in each direction. The full pavement width is there, if you take a look at it, uh, there might be a couple pinch points along the way. I'm thinking in particular right here at the weird intersection with Sheldon, um, there might be a few pinch points. But generally, um, there's enough pavement width to do three lanes in both directions. It's just painted right now for two lanes in both directions with enormous shoulders, which you probably noticed.
Oh, I see, okay, so you could make it three then?
So, uh, you know, uh, MDOT did, I, I think all of us a little bit of a favor in terms of, uh, making that accommodation for the future, uh, knowing that it takes a long time to get a major road like this, uh, redone, so it does have, you know, a significant amount of traffic carrying, uh, capacity within the existing road.
Your comment on the traffic, so zone today, is that because it's zoned industrial, and there would be businesses there that have workers that would have a lot more cars than the houses would have?
Zone commercial, the, the majority of it, at least on the north side, correct, Jeff?
Zone commercial all the way back to what, to the park, to the Rouge Park?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and, and so that is, that entails more traffic, more intensive traffic, okay. It all adds if it gets built up, but it would add less if it was residential.
Correct, right, the combined, you know, the combined, you know, mix of residential, uh, and commercial would be less than if it was just all commercial, like another bunch of shopping malls and a Meyer, which was kind of what was on the books a decade ago.
Yeah. I had one more question separate from this.
Absolutely.
Because you went over the, um, Hamlet stuff pretty quickly, and I didn't totally understand that.
Sure.
So that, um, that area, are we giving that all, whole area? How much of it is the pond that you?
Pretty much all of it.
Oh, it's all?
Yeah, it's forty-three point five eight acres, um, of property, and the pond occupies, it's kind of mostly L-shaped currently, um, and there's a future expansion on this end of it, um, for, uh, other development and other properties to enter into that, uh, pond in the future.
Okay.
Well, this is getting developed, that, that, are we at the question and answer portion?
Oh, absolutely, we've been all night, it's free for all.
I thought we were almost done.
Yeah, we're free for all.
Can I ask, Greg, so Greg, we maintain the, the Lower Huron River Trail even though it's a county park, correct?
That's correct, yeah, actually, it's kind of a joint venture between Tim and I.
Okay, now, the creation of that, was that a county, was that a Canton initiative, or was that a county initiative?
It was county property, the creation of the trail was a township initiative through the sewer, uh, sewer relief, um, maintenance there, so it's a, the trail is a sewer roadway maintenance.
Right, similar to ITC, um, when we approached Wayne County about the possible use of their park to construct the relief sewer, uh, they were looking for some form of, uh, mitigation, if you will, for the impact that we would have by building a, a pipe through the park, and understanding that was likely the scenario, we kind of offered up the idea of doing a trail, and, uh, they were very supportive all the way on, on that.
The, the, the drain property that we own inside that subdivision where we talked about, over just, just south of Ford Road, where the, where the, you know, Brookline is over there, a lot of those, um, are dirt roads, has there ever been any discussion about putting a trail or something there, or would it, because there's no, um, because there's no sewer, uh, there is no?
We have not.
We're just gonna hold though?
Yeah, we have not had any discussion, um, the majority of these properties, and I apologize, it shows up a little blurry here, but the majority of these properties we've got for, uh, no cost over the years, uh, from Wayne County, because they're just wooded wetlands, or, uh, the creek, if you follow my cursor, kind of generally does
Yeah.
kind of one of these, and then ends up, I think, along this property line, heading to the southeast.
So it's, it's, will never be built, it's just it's green space that exists.
Correct.
And it's gonna stay that way.
It's just open space.
So the county park, actually, you don't show it all here, because, I mean, the, the trail continues along I-275 then? Right, I mean, you go across Michigan just between Lots and 275.
You go under 275 and you're riding that, and then there's going to be an extension eventually on the east side of, in the blue, on the east side of 275. The trail on 275 just goes along, that's not ours, right?
That's, that section is where we just, you just got the notification about the forty thousand dollar grant we got for the engineering, so that's.
City of Wayne helped.
Right.
For which part?
For that section east of 275.
Yeah, in the blue, in the park, okay.
Yeah, basically through here, the, uh, trail, the I-275 Metro Trail exists within the MDOT right-of-way.
Yeah.
So it's in this, this big area here.
And it continues across Michigan Avenue there, okay, we just don't show it as a county park though, on this map, or a met, a park.
Which parcel are you referring to, Amory?
Um, well, just the trail that goes from the, the, from our blue and white there to the MDOT trail connection.
Yeah, there's a, there's a section that follows this property line, and then kind of comes over here to, uh,
Across the street?
To, uh, uh. Lots Road, yeah, and then there's a crossing that goes north-south in the MDOT right-of-way.
Right.
Across Michigan Avenue.
Can I ask a question about right-of-ways? The, cause, so the portion on this map where it says, we talked about Morton Taylor, um, where we own those small DNR properties that we had acquired for like a hundred dollars, that, um, we talked about, so that, that Morton Taylor right-of-way extends through, but we're saying that Morton, Morton Taylor will never be extended through because of the wetlands and all of that you talked about. Is there any way to have the county surrender, like a right-of-way, is there a process for that, or how does that work?
We have utilities, food, water, bank through there, and sewer, at Edison, and AT&T, and several telecoms that's through there. I don't think that that section of Morton Taylor wasn't built, however, no one thought section of Morton Taylor through there and Ford Road.
Right.
Everybody said thirty years ago, it would be built, so, you know, ten years, probably not, thirty years? Would be kind of a nightmare to build through there, because all the utilities are.
We're gonna have our little, we're gonna have our little autonomous vehicles, so we won't need the roads.
There you go.
That's right.
Huffer crabs.
That's right, drones.
Especially with all those facilities, and again, thirty, forty years from now, there could be, I mean, uh, I don't know if we would ever want to do it that way like that, but who would be the, who would be the person to take it?
Yeah, typically.
Thinking, give me some property that would be.
Yeah, typically what they do is they split, they split the baby in half, so the property owner on one side of the road gets half, and the property owner on the other side gets the other half.
And given that we're in there and the telecoms and Edison's in there, I, I don't think any of the utility providers of another car would really want it to be split.
Yeah. Yeah, it's where we put, uh, it's where we put our sewer, the sewer came along the east-west ITC corridor right here.
Uh-huh.
Um, and then it, um, then it comes over here to Morton Taylor, and comes down the Morton Taylor right-of-way, and then right about here, we had to angle a little bit to the southwest because there were other utility conflicts at that location, which is why we purchased those, uh, six properties from the state land bank in 2010.
Okay, and then from there, does it, how, does it meet the ITC, the north-south ITC at some point?
Yeah, yep.
Which is?
Continues, excuse me, to the south. Comes across here, and then comes down the, uh, ITC, sorry, actually comes down further south, then comes across and down the ITC corridor.
All right.
Well, when, you know, like in the area just south of there, actually Cherry Hill, where we own that long strip of land, north and south, you notice this from houses backing up, I always wondered that, what you start to see is, is if a house backs up to vacant land, they start moving their yard back. Is there a point where they own it after a certain amount of time, the resident?
None of it's a public road, I don't doubt that would fly, but I can see.
No, well, I mean, yeah, that long purple strip, so if those houses, you know, they start mowing, I've seen some put sheds up that continually move back and back, is there an eminent domain where after seven years, if nobody says anything?
Prescriptive rights issue, if they, if they buy them super prescriptive rights after a number of years, it's probably a state law where they have, and plus it's public property, if it's private property, they're approaching it, and they might, you know, so that'd be a question for Chris.
It's a public property though, it's not like, it's not like it's your neighbor who you're approaching, and you're approaching a public property.
Right.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll ask Kristin that question.
Pretty sure you can't approach on a public road right-of-way and then say, "Take it," and I know that won't apply.
Right.
Well, and, and state parks too, it's the same thing, you can't, it's, there's enough case law.
So I think that's really it, um, you know, some of the input we've got tonight will help us form, uh, some of the basis for a policy and procedure on dedicating surplus land, and, uh, a recommendation going forward. Uh, for historical purposes, the board might want to be aware that the township has used a real estate agent in the past. Um, they were hired probably twenty years ago to help us market certain properties, um, and, you know, I think the ideal thing would be to identify what we consider, what the board considers, uh, surplus, and then actively turn it over to, uh, an agent to try and market it for us. If the, if the board is desirous of selling anything that, that is surplus. I don't know if there's anything else that Greg or Josh wish to add, but.
The only, the only thing I would consider is if there's any surplus considered land, and there's any areas, especially, um, Tim and I were looking kind of east of 275, in that area where we don't currently have any parks, where we could utilize a land, some land like that, uh, to create a, a small pocket park, just to have something that's accessible to the homes over there, that would be a, a kind of an underserved area that we currently identify.
That's true, do you have, I mean, do you know where our underserved areas are for parks, because as you know, most of us have parks.
Yeah, those are, we have within our master plan identified where all the parks are, and kind of the radius within there, so we can kind of identify where we, if we were gonna put in a park, where we would go in that east of 275, especially the northern quadrant would be where we would look to kind of fill a gap for a need there.
Um, I would say, sought related but separate, um, when we were just talking about this Morton Taylor area, that's where we sold that one lot, right, the, to the homeowner behind it?
No, we didn't.
We didn't sell it.
Uh, clerk Seagres requested we remove.
The previous board did though, right, we sold one, yeah, so there was one or two, and just if you're taking input, I just, I'd, I'd prefer not to see that area torn up or torn down, trees and things like that by homeowners that are, are taking those, that would purchase those lots, and, um, looking at the pictures of what the last one did, I, I just, I think, own, you know, when you're talking about surplus lots, I want that considered in my mind, whether or not for the greater good of the community, cause that one backed up onto the, the trails, didn't it? Cause that one backed up onto the, the trails, didn't it?
It backed up to the right-of-way.
It does.
Yeah.
It does back up towards the trail.
I'd rather see the, the trail riders and things, uh, trees. I, I don't personally see the need to sell that type of lot as surplus. But we can talk about it more as a board if, if you really feel strongly about it.
I think it'd be helpful, certainly if any one of the board members has any ideas in terms of areas that you'd like to protect, like to see not designated surplus to maybe let the township supervisor know, and then we can help incorporate that into a, a policy going forward.
Another question, or any additional questions from the board? Seeing none, I think that covers the agenda items. Thank you very much, Tim. Do appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
We're at a point in the agenda where it's a call for public comment. Is there any, certainly, Mr. Miller?
Mic on? Yeah. I've been following that dump for thirty years. Now, it's all as of now, as far as I know. Records, the township that has the public records, show that there's arsenic, PCP, zingine, mercury, three and four times the level that you find in Mother Nature. You had an engineering outfit, pedigree, and armor ropes due to drilling. Now, to be more profitable, I've had a workup done, and it's two hundred acres of dump. They have houses on it, with five thousand dollars of wax taxes, and what that dumpster. That dump in thirty years, whoever owns it can walk away, and goes back to the county. When it goes back to the county, this township cannot get any tax revenue from another municipality. I've already talked a half a dozen municipalities about it. So you lose that two hundred acres, if they wanna walk away with it, and get it, let it go back, the taxes. That, that business, that dump hauler, or the waste hauler, or the person that owns that dump, they can walk away with it in thirty years, and you've lost that tax revenue. Now, let's go over to the transfer station and address that. Why do we have to have a transfer station over here, when, when some of the board members said, did that gas coming off that dump, and there's been people here at this meeting, township meetings, complained about the noise and the odor from it? And there's houses on Lily Road that run for two or three hundred thousand dollars. Now, let's go back to, to the dump, at, like I said, after, they're paying a million dollars a year, and whoever the waste haulers are, if they're not making money through, through the country, and other dumps, they could, they could walk, walk away and leave that dump to Wayne County, and you cannot get a dime from Wayne County on tax revenue. I want you to beware of that, and I want a record of this, at this meeting, for that reason.
Thank you, George. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Is there, we've got Liberty Fest coming up, uh, very soon. We're getting prepared for that. Greg?
Yeah.
How's the countdown?
Liberty, what's that?
How's the countdown going?
Uh, countdown is going well. It is getting very short. So we've got about, uh, eight or nine days, week from Thursday, Liberty Fest kicks off. It will be, will be exciting. Lots of, lots of fun new activities, new food area, and America's Ninja Warrior.
Fireworks?
Yeah, we're, I think we're gonna do those this year. Yes. Absolutely fireworks.
Yeah, we, well, I'm not gonna go there, but the, yes, Ninja Warrior, what, what's that? That's new. What's that gonna be?
So that, it's a popular TV show, that America is Ninja Warrior, so we're bringing in some of the obstacles from the TV show, so that you can, oh yeah, the warp wall, the whole thing, you'll be able to do that. You can come out and pay. There's gonna be a kids' course and an adults' course that is gonna be going on out there for the weekend, so you can come out. Yes, yes, so you can come out.
Is it anybody, or just for certain, these competitors that you can't do?
Oh, anybody, you can do it. We got a time mapped out for you.
Right, we talked about having the board do the.
Bird charity.
Do the inaugurals, run through.
We are trying to set up a, a time one morning for employees, and the board would be welcome to come out and challenge yourselves while we're doing that as well. It will not be on the clock while they're doing these things, so that. No, no, it won't be on TV. And then, uh,
But you can see it on YouTube.
If you know, if you follow the show, which a lot of people do, there will be one of the more popular Ninja Warriors on-site on Saturday as well. We, they, they've given us an idea as to who it's going to be, but they can't fully commit because of schedules and the competition schedules that they have going on. But we think we know who it is, but I can't put that out there yet.
Thank you. Is there any additional board comments? Any additional?
Just to compliment Director Mo, Judge Meyer on the Public Safety Director presentation for the Police Department, well done. Lot of hard work put into it. It's an opportunity for the township to express their appreciation for all the hard work that the men and women do. And today's an important day in the history of the world, really. What happened this thing?
What is today?
DJ?
June the sixth, Normandy.
Wow.
We're free today because of the lives that were lost. Have anybody ever been there? I had the privilege of being there. You stand on that beach, at Omaha Beach in particular, and you look up, you're at least three hundred yards from the cliffs, and there's nothing between the water and the cliffs except the, the enemy. Kind of impressive.
I have.
And you get up on top, and there's the cemetery, row and row and row after crosses and stars of David of the men and women who died that day.
It's like taking Arlington Cemetery and moving it over to another part of the world. It's so gigantic and.
Kind of impressive. Kind of important day to, all of us need to take time in these, in these times, when so much has gone on worldwide, and just appreciate the sacrifices that were made.
Thank you, John. Very good. Any additional board comment? Seeing none, call for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Good night, everybody. Thank you.